We're gonna get started this morning. I'm gonna be your emcee through the next couple of days, leading you through and guiding you through all of the great talks that we have planned. So I'll just kick us off this morning with a bit of a land acknowledgement. We have a friend of ISC and local elder Liz Bochamagod here with us this morning. And I'd just like to give a tobacco offering for her, giving us her time here with us this morning. We really appreciate Liz's time. We've done some training with her in the past and it's been really wonderful. So thanks for being here with us this morning, Liz. I'll just give our land acknowledgement briefly before we pass it along. The Invasive Species Centre has worked with some local elders on our land acknowledgement. And it's something that we're quite proud of. There is a visual interpretation that I would like to share as well. And you can follow along in that way. So the invasive species, there is the long history of the First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples on the lands now known as Canada, and strives to show respect for their ancestors, their communities, and to them individually. We greatly appreciate the significance of the lands, waters, and all living things, and offer our gratitude to the Indigenous people for their care and for their teachings about our earth. Our relationships with Indigenous communities are important, and we'll continue to listen and learn how we can be in good relationship with Indigenous peoples, the lands and waters and all living things, and to act accordingly. The Invasive Species Centre respectfully acknowledges that our head office is located on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, the Bajauana and Garden River First Nations, as well as the longtime settlement of the Métis people in the Robinson-Huron Treaty area. We're happy if you can see the Ojibwe translation through the QR code there that our local elder Barb Nolan has created for us. So big thanks to Barb for her support on all of this work. And with that, Liz, I'm going to pass it over to you to do our welcoming prayer. Thank you.
Awesome. Good morning. Minoguzap Kinawaya. Good morning to everybody. What a beautiful day, first of all. Secondly, I wish to acknowledge the greetings that you give from the work that you've done in preparing for a land acknowledgement. I say tumigwetch to you for that. And wish to acknowledge certainly where everybody is dialing in from, calling in from, participating on Zoom is a wonderful thing, allows people from right across the land to come together. And that's wonderful. So acknowledgement to wherever you happen to be and hope your day may be early if you're on the west part of our beautiful land. Certainly a little bit later if you're on the east part of our land. But welcome to the start of the Invasive Species Forum. I want to certainly give thanks for the tobacco, the sema. One of the things that I wish to share with you here, just to kind of maybe set the tone for your next couple of days of learning, is around that tobacco. I share with you freely a teaching that I've received, and certainly it's a common teaching, maybe a bit of variety right across the land for sure. However, the beautiful intentions that go into that sema, that tobacco. And that tobacco that was shared today was tobacco that was also thought about with intention for all of you who are participating more than a few weeks ago, when I was approached and asked if I could help with the beginning of opening your forum, your gathering. And so people have been thinking about you for a long time. People have been thinking about the intention of what it is that you're going to be doing, sharing, listening to, and then taking into your own practice, wherever you happen to be into the role that you might be holding or hosting in your area. And that, in one of my teachings, is one of the greatest honours that people can give, bestow, or have for somebody else, is the good intention in your heart that you have for the work that you're going to do. And so I thank the team, the organising team, that has given beautiful intention to me on your behalf and asked if I could participate. So just know that, you know, people have been thinking about you for a long time, getting ready for today and the next couple of days. I also want to encourage you and challenge you to think about, you know, the information that you're hearing. Sometimes it's new information, other times it's a refresher of information. Whatever the case may be for you, another teaching that I share freely with you here is that what we do from today forward is what counts. Certainly the past is important and acknowledging it and making use of, you know, any of the information gained from that and implementing it into today. But going forward, if you're learning new things, the intention is for you to put it into practice, whatever it might happen to be. And I'm gonna invite you to think along the lines of our Indigenous people right across the land into what we call seven generational thinking, that we think about the intentions, you know, everything that we do and how it is going to impact seven generations from now. And my good decisions or my good intentions or my not-so-good choices maybe that I might follow through on will definitely have impact. And so I invite you to keep that in mind, keep that in heart as you go through the next couple of days. What am I going to implement into my practice in whatever role it is that I have? Whether it's my at-home role, you know, as a dad or a mom who has influence or impact on children, adult or younger, impact on grandchildren who are, you know, growing up in front of you, thinking about our climate, thinking about, you know, all the different things that we can contribute to in a good way for Shkakumekwe, our mother earth, to be healthy and to continue to provide for us as the people who walk the earth and the life that helps to take care of the earth. So I invite you to think about all those things and wish to start your day and your gathering with those thoughts. Tumigwetch, kijemnado. Great thank you Creator for this beautiful day and for Minobomazewen, the good life. Whatever that means for any of our attendees here, whatever that means for anybody in our circles, our back home situations. We want to give thanks for this beautiful day, this good life. And we want everybody that's participating to participate with an open heart, an open mind, to receive the information, new, refresher information that might affirm knowledge that's already held, and to use this in a good way so that going forward, we are thinking about the generations to come and how our work may impact those generations to come. Tumigwetch Kinawaya, tumigwetch, kijemnado, tumigwetch, tumigwetch. Already back to you, Madison. Have a great gathering, everybody. And just know that the tobacco that was given to me and the sema, the sage, and the other medicines that were lit this morning will be put out on your behalf. Have a great gathering, everybody.
Tumigwetch, Liz. Thank you so much for your time this morning. Again, appreciate it. Thanks again for bringing up the seven generations. I think that's something that I find kind of easy to incorporate into my work as invasive species. We know have long-term impacts on our ecosystems and our environment. So I think it's something that's easy for us practitioners to really keep top of mind. So thanks for bringing that teaching to us this morning, Liz. I think everybody can take that through with us. And next, I'm happy to introduce our executive director Colin Casson to give some opening remarks for our forum. So welcome Colin, and I'll let you take it away.
Okay. A big thank you and tumigwetch to both Mackenzie and Liz for kicking off our event today in a good way. This is probably the most exciting day for the Invasive Species Centre on our annual calendar. So welcome. Seeing 219 people, 220, the early birds who have tuned in, and very excited for a great event today. So my name's Colin Casson, and as Mac mentioned, I'm the executive director of the Invasive Species Centre, and it's my pleasure to welcome you all to our 2025 Invasive Species Forum. We're proud once again to have record-high registration. These numbers keep growing year over year with more than 1,700 people as of this morning scheduled to attend, making this Canada's largest meeting on invasive species something we're very proud to create this opportunity for these conversations. So as you know, events of this size and impact are a lot of work. So I just want to give a quick shout out to the incredible team at the ISC who's been working hard for months and months to provide us with an opportunity to listen, to learn, and to celebrate our great successes together. So what a pleasure it's been to see this event grow from a small in-person meeting with a couple dozen attendees to a really impressive crowd of colleagues that join us today from all across Ontario, all across Canada and Turtle Island, and in the entire world. So it's very exciting. I'd also like to acknowledge that we're very grateful that this event is supported by the Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources. This support allows us to bring all of our attendees today and throughout the week, a really high-quality, a high-calibre event that's going to be able to allow us all to continue to enhance action on invasive species together. So in case you're not familiar with the Invasive Species Centre, we're a not-for-profit organisation that's headquartered in Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario. We're founded in 2011, and we have a mission at the ISC to mobilise action against invasive species that harm the environment, our economy, and our society. And so we do this through working in our projects and programmes through three separate buckets. We lead and we mobilise action on invasive species. We enhance knowledge and understanding on invasive species, and we build the investment and collective support on invasive species. The common goal of our organisation is to reduce the impacts of invasive species, which as you know very well are one of the greatest threats to biodiversity globally. Their effects are felt in many areas, from agriculture to forestry to recreation to tourism. They touch our lives in many different ways, as you know. And events like this forum we see are vitally important because they bring people together to share the latest developments in invasive species research, management, and really they're the first step in taking collaborative and comprehensive action on invasive species across all taxa. So over the next three days, attendees are gonna have a chance to learn from more than 60 invasive species experts and attend sessions on a wide range of topics, including Controlling Invasive Fragmities, a special session that kicks off tomorrow morning. New this year, we've got an entire session that's been dedicated to invasive land animals as well. So be sure to tune in on Thursday to learn more about wild pigs and the great work that's being done in Canada and the US, as well as the rat management plans in Alberta. On Wednesday morning, we're gonna get a chance to celebrate the people who really do walk the walk every day on invasive species action in Canada, and we're gonna celebrate their successes at the Invasive Species Centre award ceremony, something we're really excited to to get together and to celebrate all the great work that's been happening to protect our lands and our waters from invasive species. So kicking off immediately after this, please do tune in to join us. We're gonna hear from organisations who receive funding under the Invasive Species Action Fund and the Invasive Fragmities Control Fund. And we're gonna create a great chance here just to see some community-led solutions, community-led action happening, all thanks to dedicated professionals and volunteers alike. So really excited to kick things off with a very energising session. You know, when I sit back and kind of take a look at what we're gonna go over the next three days, I'm reminded of one thing, and that's kind of this unifying theme of hope that's planted throughout our schedule. So just a few examples of some of those really hopeful, encouraging, optimistic opportunities I invite you to join me in tuning in for. The first is some really interesting, promising biocontrol methods and research that's happening on invasive fragmities, something that's a really exciting development for many of us. A successful early detection and rapid-response case study programme where the European water chestnut is on the path to eradication in Niagara region, Ontario. We're seeing the incorporation of social sciences to link resilient people together to resilient ecosystems. And we're also seeing our really neat talk on the impact of passive biosafety surveillance systems as well. So really exciting new developments, both in early implementation and research and scaled opportunity that give us a bit of hope for tomorrow. And the goal of this event, perhaps above all else, is really just to foster some meaningful dialogue, to share some innovative solutions, to get together and strengthen our collective efforts here on invasive species as we all march towards positive impact on this issue. And encourage you all to use this event for a few key reasons. It's a great opportunity to broaden our taxonomic horizons and learn from experts in other fields who have gained wins and really important information on other subjects that we can take and transfer into our own species or taxonomic group of interest. We've got a chance that we can listen to our colleagues working in different systems or working in different ways of knowing and incorporate that into how we approach our steps forward tomorrow. We've got a great chance to ask questions as well during every session. We've got a great chance as well just to find those connective threads that if we can tug on them really carefully, we can find new opportunities for more connected and more effective ultimately responses to invasive species. So together we have made, and we're gonna continue to make, big strides on this issue. And a massive, massive thank you to you for your partnership and your dedication to improving the invasive species reality across North America, across the globe. So I wish you a productive first few days at the 2025 Invasive Species Forum. And that's enough of me. Let's get on with the actual content part of the show today. So Mac had turned it over to you at this point to get us kicked off.
Awesome. Thanks for your remarks, Colin. We're excited to kick off this event. It's been a few years running now, and we're just excited to share this knowledge and spread the word of invasives and all of the new exciting work that's going on on the ground and in the labs. So this morning, we're gonna start off, as Colin mentioned, with our grant recipient highlights. Our moderator for this session this morning is going to be Madeline Schuster. Also, Madeline, I invite you to join me here this morning. Before I head off and pass it over to Madeline, I just want to give a bit of a highlight of what we have to look forward to today. If you're interested in taking on a bit of what Liz mentioned this morning, we do have an Indigenous community session towards the end of the day today, starting at 3:50 PM Eastern Time. And we also will have some grant recipients highlighted coming up in this next session. So please look forward to those. We also have some horizon scanning this afternoon. And what I am looking forward to the most potentially is our keynote speaker at 12:30 this afternoon. Lee Greenwood's going to be talking about the importance of community science and community outreach on invasive pest, forest pest detection. So looking forward to that. Some community science more on this morning. And yeah, just looking forward to hearing all of the things. So I'll pass it over to Madeline to get us started, and I'll head out.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Welcome, everyone, to the Grant Recipient Highlights Special Session. Just a reminder that there'll be an opportunity to ask each speaker questions at the end of their talk. Please put those questions in the Q and A section, and I'll post them to the speakers. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome our first speaker, Dr. Janine West from Landscape Ontario. Sorry, can... Oh, sorry.
Good morning. Can you hear me? I'm having difficulty finding a share button. It doesn't look like our practice session.
Hi, Janine. I can hear you. The share button should be at the, on the taskbar at the bottom.
Thank you. Sorry, I needed to get out of, out of the session in order to do that. There we go. That should work. And I will... It's really not working out. Let me see here. There we go. Does that work? Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, then we're good to go. All right. Thanks very much. Appreciate you working through that. I'm Janine West, and I'm the Grower Technical Analyst with Landscape Ontario. It's hard to say all those words in our association's name, so I'll just call us LO. I've been working with Landscape Ontario for at least a decade, and invasive species has been on my radar. Our sector group is fairly broad. We represent a lot of people in the green industry. We have over 11 industry sector groups. We have over 3,000 members. And so we have a very wide reach within the industry in Ontario. Typically, we reach over 8,000 people on a regular basis through our blogs and social media and our newsletters. This means a lot of opportunity, right, to reach out to people and to connect on really important issues. So we have had a lot of invasive pests in our, in our history that we've been exposed to in the nursery sector that we've cared about that have impacted our crops. So these are things that we've been working on for decades. There's lots of different examples, and not all of these pests are regulated by CFIA. Some of them, like box blight on the upper left, are not regulated officially. But these are still really important pests that we've been scouting and monitoring for at our farms for many years. But we've also had a special position that we've created under Landscape Ontario that's supported by training and guidance from the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness. We have a nursery scout position. So we hire a summer student for about 18 weeks every year, and they survey nursery crops at a number of farms, either every week or every other week. And these past couple of years, with support from the Invasive Species Action Fund, we've been able to expand the surveillance to additional areas outside of the nurseries and as well to spend more time focusing on some broader impacting invasive pests like spotted lanternfly, oak wilt, and beech leaf diseases. And we've also been working with our scout to identify Tree of Heaven sites as host, preferred host plants for spotted lanternfly. So I'm gonna skip back a year just for a little bit of context. Our scout focused a lot on box tree moth in 2023 summer. Box tree moth was spreading in Ontario. It was a very serious pest for our sector. I have a picture behind me of some boxwood plants, and this is a huge value crop for our sector. So we needed a lot of attention. We were really interested in spread and how, and learning about the biology of this invasive. But we also did other activities. We were looking for spotted lanternfly, oak wilt, beech leaf disease. And we were starting to catalogue Tree of Heaven sites. But we also discovered zigzag sawfly in the process, and it wasn't known to be in Ontario in 2023. So our scouting program actually picked this up, and we were able to report it on iNaturalist. CFIA has not regulated this pest, but it was just an example of how valuable eyes on the ground can be to find new invasives. And this past summer, we really enhanced our focus on surveillance for spotted lanternfly, oak wilt, and beech leaf diseases. We are seeing, you know, some spread and some new sightings of oak wilt, et cetera. We have not found any sightings for spotted lanternfly, or, as you know, there's no confirmed detections at this time. We were able to catalogue additional Tree of Heaven sites, which I think is really important. We're learning that from the US, that they will stick around if there are Tree of Heaven. The spotted lanternfly will stay in those areas, and they'll move on if there isn't a Tree of Heaven. So that's an important component of surveillance. And we were also able to do some scouting for hemlock woolly addledid because we were able to get started in May. Now, the ideal time is, kind of ends in May for scouting for this pest, but at least we were able to get a little bit in this past summer. In terms of Tree of Heaven sites, you can see a bit of the range of where we visited, 29 new sites last year. 18 of them had Tree of Heaven. We were able to upload most of those to iNaturalist, but unfortunately not all because some of them were inaccessible by car, but we could see them from a distance. And as I mentioned, no spotted lanternfly sightings at all in 2024. And then there's what I do. I'm the Grower Technical Analyst, so I work with the growers on a whole bunch of different issues. And I've always been involved in invasive pest work, usually on the trade side, working with AMFA and CFIA on programs to move plants safely. However, I've done a little bit of trapping and scouting surveillance work with them, particularly for box tree moth and for Japanese beetle to help people out in Vancouver with appropriate traps. So we had an opportunity with ISAF 2024 to expand our work, and so we were able to split some more of my time on invasive pests. So that was really exciting for us. Over here. So one of the components was collaboration. We, I was able to join several task forces and work with a number of associations, as well as agencies, government agencies. This is so critical. So we have all of these resources. We have all this potential to collaborate and to contribute and to advance it and to get communication pieces worked out between all of us. So I think that this is a really key part of invasive management and getting on top of it early, particularly for major pests that could have widespread impact. And one of the other things I had to do was learn more about spotted lanternfly. So in Midland, I went to Buffalo, New York, where there was a sighting. It was a really miserable day. Unfortunately, the only day I could go. Just seeing if it's not letting me advance my slides. Let's see if I can do that. Yep, there we go. So yeah, really, really miserable day, but I was able to find them. Really hard to catch on when they know you're there, and they like scurry away really, really fast. So it was a good learning experience. I was able to see all the nymph stages there that day, but really hard to get good quality photos. And we expect, in our training, we tell people in our guidance, catch it, take a photo of it, squish it, you know, report it. But catching it and taking a good photo, not so simple. The good thing is they're very identifiable. And then we did a lot of training under the deliverables for ISAF 2024. We were, got a lot of inquiries from Flowers Canada, the flower culture greenhouse growers. So we did a presentation for them on how to identify it, how to manage it, if they found it, and guidance for what, how to report it. We also developed a training tool. This was a picture that Denise Beaton from AMFA sent me from Ohio State. They had created these keychains, and I thought it was a great idea. And she said, "Yeah, but their egg masses look terrible. You've got to do a better job than that." So we actually were able to contract a lab in BC, Forge Labs. And fortunately, I was out there, was able to go out to BC for another project I was working on, and I stopped in to see them. And we made sure what the process was and how things were going with the development. So this is a Canadian company, really, really high-quality work that they did. So they ended up preparing our keychains for us, and you can see the egg masses were approved by Denise and Hannah and Wendy and Cassie, all at AMFA, and they are life-size and somewhat realistic, a step up. And of course, we put the QR code on for how to report the insect to CFIA. So this turned out to be a very positive, a really successful tool in our training sessions. So we did a number of training sessions in addition to the ones for flowers, the flower growers. We went to transportation corridors out the Flying J, and we recognised that after talking to at least 50 people at that location down in Fort Erie, maybe one person knew about spotted lanternfly. And these are all truckers bringing, coming across the border at the Peace Bridge. And we know that spotted lanternfly has been actually like flown into a car at the bridge through this, in the summer, late summer last year. So we know that these are really critical. A transportation corridor is like a really important pathway for how this pest will probably come into Ontario. So we did a training session there. I also went to Tilbury the following week, and maybe two people knew about the insect just briefly. One of them actually had had training as a trucker coming out of Pennsylvania, back and forth, the hotspot. And so we do know that there are some training sessions happening, but very few. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there to improve our communication with the general public. We also had a congress event in January. So I presented to the groundsman and a bunch of different sector groups at the live stage on January 8. And we also discussed spotted lanternfly and the work that we're doing with the scout and ISAF funding in February. We have more workshops planned. Unfortunately, they didn't fit within the project scope, but we were going to be investing a lot of energy and training, not only nursery people, but continuing to work with the grounds maintenance, landscapers, and garden centre groups to have awareness about spotted lanternfly through the spring. We've also worked on blogs, articles that have been written. We've also worked on blogs, articles that have been written, so on different pests, including spotted lanternfly. But I just thought it would be neat to share the Almzig Zegzawfly posting that Cassie prepared with our scout Dawson from twenty twenty-four, just because it was such an interesting thing and really confirmed the value of the program and the support that we're getting to have a scout. So we have new pests. We, we are seeing a new Phytothra. This isn't ever going to end, it seems, so we will continue to have a scout position in twenty twenty-five and beyond. It's so important to have those eyes on the ground. So I just want to say thank you to the project partners, the growers, Landscape Ontario, OMFA for all the support in helping us train and provide entomology guidance, and particularly to the Invasive Species Action Fund for supporting the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janine. We'll now have time, a little bit of time for a couple of questions. I see one here in the chat. Someone asks, are the files for the three D printed keychain available anywhere for those with access to printers locally?
We currently have the files with Forge Labs. They're quite expensive to produce accurately, so we haven't been sharing those at this time, but we do have extra tags available, and they can be ordered.
Okay, amazing. I think we may not have much time for questions. We do have your email in the chat here, Janine, for anyone interested in asking any further questions. But thank you so much for that talk. It's really great to hear about the work that Landscape Ontario is doing.
Thanks very much. Have a great day.
You too. Up next, we have Krista Copway from Curve Lake First Nation.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. So. Can you see my screen?
Um, yes. Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so Anine, I'm Krista Copway from Curve Lake First Nation. I'm the environmental coordinator in our lands department, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about the invasive species that we have in Curve Lake. First, we'll go over the lands that are part of the reserve or the ones that we manage. A quick touch on our traditional and treaty territories, what invasive species live here, the work that we've done to date, and our future efforts, and then questions if we have time. So we manage, or I manage about nine hundred hectares of Curve Lake's land. We have a few different types of parcels of land. We have federal lands, and then we also have some fee simple land that are under the provincial regulation. But I get to basically manage the invasive species within the pink lines. And then down in the bottom corner, there's some dash lines which are our fee simple or our provincial held lands. And then we also co-own the little dots, the little pink dots are our islands of the Trent, and they're strewn through the Trent Severn Waterway. So we co-manage those with First, Skougog First Nation and Hiawatha First Nation. So we have quite a bit of land strewn throughout Peterborough County and beyond, so. And then this is a treaty map that shows some of the treaties in Ontario, and we are signatories to quite a few, and we have a vast traditional treaty territory. Currently, I am in, and Curve Lake is in Treaty Twenty or the eighteen eighteen treaty. It's kind of in the center of the map. But there's quite a few different treaties, and if you want to learn more, please reach out, and I can gladly help educate on treaties. So some of the species that we have confirmed in Curve Lake is the European Common Reed or Fragmites. We've had a few incidences of the giant pogue weed. Buckthorn is quite rampant. Scots pine is here and there. Garlic mustard is starting to come in, where we're noticing hydro one trucks coming and doing maintenance along our ditches and disturbing the soil. We have dog strangling vine, gout weeds from people with just purchasing it through the horticulture trade. Zebra mosses have been in our lakes for quite a few years now and caused quite a bit of havoc. And then brown goby has been in here for well over ten years now as well. So we basically investigate any sightings of invasives or any kind of unknown sightings and consult technical documents, best management practices, and just see what everybody's doing in regards to it and how we can kind of manage that species. We've been really focusing on Fragmites lately. We have thirteen sites in Curve Lake through surveying. We do, since we're a peninsula, we have a lot of shoreline, and we have all our islands. So we do boat surveys and then vehicle surveys of the roadways. So we've identified thirteen sites over the last three years. And we conducted eleven site removals this past field season. And we did manual removals at majority of them because they're very small and just sites that are just getting established. And then we also teamed up with Invasive Fragmites Control Center and the First Nations Fragmites Control Organization to assist us with our largest site, which has required a herbicidal treatment in October. We also did a little bit of removal training and helping out some of our friends in Hiawatha. They got a little bit of funding and didn't really know what to do, and they thought they had frags. So we went down and helped to identify their frag at the Serpent Mounds Park. And then we also did a little bit of training, which you see here in the photo. Some of their staff from the Serpent Mounds Park came and helped do removals and see the different sites that we manage in Curve Lake. And we secured funding this past fiscal through the Invasive Fragmites Control Fund, which helped us develop our management plan. It helped us hire a summer student and just get removal equipment like shovels and cane cutters. And then we also do have a drone and GIS to do some monitoring and mapping. I am going to take you through a little tour to show you where our, can you see that okay? Hopefully you can.
Um, sorry, no, I can just see your slideshow, not in presenter.
Okay. I wonder, can you see the Google Earth map right now?
No, I still just see your slideshow.
Okay, maybe I'll, maybe I'll just skip the tour. That's fine. So we also, we also dealt with Emerald Ash Bor. It's been established in Peterborough County and Curve Lake area for quite a few years now. But we had some hazardous trees around some of our infrastructure that was owned by the Curve Lake or the organization, especially around our daycare and our schools and our food banks. So we did removals on all the trees that were not healthy enough to try and sustain. The ones that were healthy enough, we tried to do the trees in pesticide treatment with some local arborists. And then we replaced trees that we removed to put that green infrastructure back in with oaks, maples, and birch. And since then, we've actually been doing an annual community tree distribution, and we give out a variety of trees. A lot of fruit trees lately, but give out a variety of trees to community members to increase the trees in the community. We also tried to offer a pesticide treatment to the community at a rebate, but there was no response. There's a very negative view of pesticides and herbicides in the community. And through a community meeting that we had, giving updates to the community in October, a former council member gave us some history on a banning of pesticides and herbicides in the community. So we will not be using that in the future to manage any invasives. So our outreach helps us get that feedback from our community, but it also helped us find some of our frag sites and the different invasives that are coming into the community and becoming established. So our outreach is working well, and we do community meetings. We have quarterly community meetings. We also have a biweekly newsletter. We have social media accounts. I also do different programming with our Curve Lake School. We also have our health center that does men's groups and women's groups, and we team up with them. And we do little presentations at their little monthly gatherings and help create that education and awareness and kind of recruit those citizen science scientists that love to be involved. So we've been doing a lot of outreach like that. We also do departmental luncheon learns, especially with our public works, to help educate them and try and implement the clean equipment protocol because we're seeing a lot of our new sites that have invasives have been disturbed, soil that's been disturbed by them doing some kind of development. So we're just trying to make sure everybody washes their machines before they transfer sites to reduce that transmission. Some of the future efforts, so we just do education and training on the emerging species. We just try and stay up to date and take any training that we can to educate ourselves and watching EDMAPs and all the different apps and whatnot that you can report on for what might be coming our way. And then we try and do prevention and management through the clean equipment protocol. We're building our capacity in prescribed burning, which is something that Indigenous people have done for many years, and it was a way to really manage, help manage the land. And there's a lot of our culturally significant species that require fire to keep, keep being out on the land. And so we're trying to build our capacity there, but it'll also help us manage our invasive species. And then we collaborate. I'm part of the Invasive Species Working Group for the Nishinabek Nation. We have monthly meetings with the OLA, which is the Ontario Aboriginal Lands Association, where we just collaborate, and we have peer-to-peer support systems and share information and funding and all this stuff. And same with the National Aboriginal Lands Managers Association. So lots of good groups that are working together to try and tackle these invasive species as they come into our communities. Any questions?
Thank you for your talk, Krista. I don't see any questions in the Q and A yet. Someone in the chat asked, are, um, sorry. Are there any programs or outreach activities to engage local arborists?
Um, no, we haven't, we have not, so, um, basically went out to our local arborists. We work with them on some of the tree ones, but they, they're pretty aware already. When we go to them, they already know most of the species that we're looking at. And, and they help us, if they're doing work in the community, they'll contact us if they find anything, so. I'm with Curve Lake, I see the one, I'm with Curve Lake First Nation.
Someone asks, may I ask how invasive species have potentially impacted access to tradition medicines or practices in your community?
Um, yeah, it just reduces the biodiversity, and that's why we're actually trying to get back into the prescribed burning so that we can use that fire that has been missing on the land to kind of get those culturally significant species that require the fire to come back. And so we create that connection with the land again. So invasives do have an impact on, on our traditional and culturally significant species.
Um, I think that may be all the time we have for questions. We will include your email in the chat, so anyone could ask questions later that way. But thank you so much, Krista.
Yep, thank you. Take care.
All right. For our next speaker, we have Lee Merrill from Credit Valley Conservation.
Nope, just trying to share my screen here. Seems to be lagging a little bit, sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Can you see the correct view there?
I can see your notes in the slide.
Of course, it's going to do that to me. Okay, let me switch it back around here. And it's not going to show me my notes, but that's okay. All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you to the ISC for, for having me today and allowing me to, to speak about our presentation or our project under the Invasive Species Action Fund this year. My name is Lee Merrill, and I am the coordinator of a terrestrial restoration at Credit Valley Conservation. Most of my responsibilities are coordinating our invasive species management program. And today I'm going to talk about our project from this past year that was focused on oak wilt, early detection, monitoring, and program development. So today I'm going to go over a really brief overview of us, Credit Valley Conservation, as well as a brief overview of oak wilt and its current status in proximity to, to our watershed. And then I'll talk about our project, so, so what we did and, and our results. And that'll kind of be split into phases of our project with one of them being the implementation of detection efforts towards oak wilt, another being the development of our oak wilt action plan. And then lastly, some spreading of awareness. I'll then touch on what things look like for us moving forwards and, and comment on kind of the lasting impacts that this, this project has for us, and then try to leave some, some time for questions as well. So I won't get into too much detail here, but CVC is one of thirty-six conservation authorities in the province, and our mission is to protect and restore the Credit River watershed through science, education, policy, and action. This is our watershed pictured here. It's roughly a thousand square kilometers stretching from the headwaters area in Orangeville down to Lake Ontario in, in Mississauga. There are a lot of different land uses in this part of the GTA, so it's roughly split three equal parts, so that being urban, agricultural, and natural areas. And the bulk of the urban areas are down in the southern half, and more of the agricultural and natural areas are definitely up in the northern half. But as you can expect, the presence of a lot of high-value, value natural habitats in close proximity to kind of highly urbanized areas, that means there's a lot of risk for species introductions from anthropogenic causes. We do have a dedicated invasive species management team that implements our program, and we've been managing invasive species in our watershed for, for about a few decades. A lot of that is invasive plant management, but, but other things as well, including early detection and rapid response efforts towards forest pests, which, which is where this project fits in. We also have an invasive species strategy that was last updated in, in twenty twenty-one, and that guides our program, and, and you can find a copy of it through our website if you're, if you're interested. So again, I won't get into too much detail here because I'm sure most of you know what oak wilt is. But as a reminder, it's a fungal disease from the Brettziella fagisirum fungus, and it can infect various species of oak, but red oaks are more susceptible, progresses faster in them as opposed to white varieties. It's spread locally by root contact in, with neighboring trees, as well as by sap beetles. And the beetles are attracted to pressure pads, which is the, the fruiting body of the fungus shown in the lower picture here. They have a distinct smell. Some describe it as juicy fruit gum, and that attracts the beetles. They, they pick up and then transfer spores. Whereas long-distance spread, that usually occurs often by the transport of infected firewood. And that can cause, the disease can cause mortality in as little as two weeks post-infection, but it can take up to a year potentially as well. And obviously, oaks are a super important hardwood, hardwood species to, to our natural forests, and it's concerning the potential damage oak wilt could cause there. But additionally, its effects, it could have really big effects on urban forest cover as well with oaks being a common street and yard tree. So, so that's alarming as well. So oak wilt was first documented in Ontario in, in twenty twenty-three in the Niagara region, as well as up in Springwater Township. And that's about forty-five kilometers from either side of our watershed pictured in, in the center here. All the other known occurrences and distribution- Uh, all the other known occurrences and distribution are down towards the southwest across the US border. Um, and it's certainly possible that the northern infestation could have come from infected wood being transported. All the kind of major routes to get up to that berry area. Um, from the existing infestations would have almost certainly had to have gone through our watershed. Um, so that was kind of concerning and and warranted us uh giving oak wilt a little bit more attention. So so our project, we submitted this project to the Invasive Species Action Fund micro grant category and were successful. And the project title was uh early detection monitoring for oak wilt in high-risk forest communities. And there were a few main phases of the project that I that I mentioned before that I'll go over. So the first being uh early detection monitoring to try and detect oak wilt if it is present in the watershed. Um, so as a part of that, first we had to identify where our oaks are. Um, we had to identify our protocols we were going to use and then uh we had to actually get out and and implement the monitoring. So on the data side of things, we have uh ecological land classification data across our properties in the watershed. As well as forest resource inventory data. Um, so we were able to use both of those data sets to do a bit of analysis and filter to areas with a significant portion of oak trees. Um, and then we could generate some mapping of target areas. So this is just showing an example of mapping of uh a few priority forests that were or forest areas that were identified. Um, so overall, the data analysis identified just over fifty hectares of priority surveillable oak-dominated stands. Um, and monitoring was planned for uh twenty-eight locations that were spread across twelve different properties. As far as monitoring protocols go, we we didn't need to reinvent the wheel there, so we used uh the CFIA's survey protocol. Um, and that's available through through the ISC's website. Um, you certainly would have heard by now if there were any detections, but I can confirm that uh we didn't make any detections. Um, so that's great news. Um, we can't say that the watershed is for sure oak wilt-free. Um, we were focused on our properties uh as well as a few other pu- public properties that we have uh data for. Um, and that was focused in natural areas, so we weren't looking at street and yard trees or or private properties. Um, but we can have some confidence that uh the surveyed forests um are oak wilt-free and. And we now have a lot of base baseline data on the health of our oak trees and and we can use that in the future as well. So the other big part of our project was developing an oak wilt action plan. So we wanted to make sure that we were as prepared as we can be if a detection were to be made. Making sure that kind of the next steps are defined so we can react quickly instead of uh on the fly. Um, so we had a lot of discussions on on what this document should look like, what it should include. And a large part of it's kind of refining. Um, refining its scope down to to what would be useful for us with the future in mind, so. Um, we involved some partner organizations in in those discussions and and they helped with some guidance and direction as well. And uh in the end, getting all that perspective and and refining the direction of the document, that took. A fair bit longer than than we originally expected. Um, but once things were a little bit more refined, our technician, uh Alana, got got started with the writing of it. Um, it's still currently in draft status, so we're near the end of step two. Um, once it goes through our final review process, um it'll be ready to be implemented definitely before our twenty twenty-five field season. Um, aiming to actually have the the final document by the end of this month. And then number three, uh implementing that plan, that of course won't won't happen until we we actually make a detection. Um, of oak wilt or if if we um ever make a detection. Um, so just some details on the plan itself, so of course it's got a lot of background information, it details our early detection monitoring. Um, has some information on our data. Um, it has our baseline monitoring results from this year. Uh, proposed annual monitoring schedules, the survey protocols we're following. Um, some internal roles and responsibilities for for detection. Early detection within our organization. Um, and then it also has a lot of stuff planning for that rapid response, so details on the possible management strategies. Um, ongoing monitoring and restoration planning and implementing um that after management. Um, defining internal roles and responsibilities as well as defining known or potential involvement outside of our organization. Um, really, it's just defining the sequence of actions and and the appropriate context for all the next steps to to take place. And then it also covers a little bit of some other things like risk reduction strategies and and some plans towards public engagement as well. Um, so so the last component um was a little bit of outreach on oak wilt. Um, so through our social media platforms and and e-newsletters. Um, trying to spread a public awareness, you know, increasing the the chance of a detection from the public. Um, or helping with risk reduction by spreading awareness on how they could potentially be contributing to spread. Um, as well as uh keeping staff internally throughout our organization up to date on information. Um, so we're a fairly large organization with with all kinds of staff working all over the watershed, so. To making them aware of what to look for, um, when it's okay to prune oaks, things like that and 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 how and where to report it as well. Um, making sure everyone's up to date uh through through an internal blog. So the hope is to continue to implement these detection efforts. Um, that's resource dependent for our team. Um, we'll have the action plan and be ready to respond if we need to. Um, this process and kind of the groundwork for it, if if we can call it that, we plan to expand and adapt that towards other pests. So we do early detection monitoring for other species as well, like hemlock willia delgid. Um, and we'd like to formalize those efforts and have an action plan for that species as well. So we have applied to the the Action Fund um again this year and and hope to get support for that. Um, but ultimately, no oak wilt was found and and that hopefully means we have healthy oak trees within our for- these forests. And the potential impact of us being able to detect and respond with a hopeful eradication if it is ever found. That uh remains the the lasting impact of this project. Um, so thank you again to the the ISC for for the support and the and the chance to to talk today. Um, and happy to answer any questions if we have time.
Thank you for your presentation, Lee. Um, I think we do have time for a couple of questions, I don't see any in the Q and A, but um in the chat someone asks. Is this action plan a publicly available document?
So it uh it won't be, it's it's for internal purposes to to define our actions after. So it's not being uh refined through all the accessibility standards and things like that that will deem it uh available to to the public. But uh we we are um happy to share it um to other organizations if it would help their development and and actions towards oak wilt. Uh, but it won't be publicly available.
Um, someone asks, how often do you plan to check for oak wilt?
Yeah, um ideally, um should we have the capacity and resources to do so, we we plan to uh do recurring uh yearly monitoring. Um, and and also we plan to look at the areas that we did monitor. And have baseline data on and and reprioritize. Um, what makes sense for recurring monitoring based on what we've actually seen on site as far as, you know, oak density and. And uh and risk and quality for the of the habitat as well, so hopefully uh hopefully annually.
Um, we have one more question in the Q and A, um someone asks. Have there been partnerships implemented with residential arborists?
Not um as of as of yet, um I think part of our outreach strategy involves. You know, those getting information across to to those who are working in the industry and in high-risk settings to notice. Um, and and that uh is definitely incorporated into our the action plan as well for us. But um we we haven't uh as a part of this project had direct contact with with any that are working uh at the moment.
I think that may be all we have time for in terms of questions. Um, thank you so much for your talk, Lee, and again, we'll include your email um in the chat so that. Anyone could ask further questions afterwards.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, for our final speaker, we have Jessica Zadori with Mitch Pecotin First Nation.
All right, okay, hopefully you guys can see that.
Yep, looks good.
Okay, perfect. So let me get started here. Okay, so uh, good morning, everyone, thanks for coming to my presentation titled From Concept to Action. Mitch Pecotin's Clean Equipment Protocol, where I'll walk you through our recent field season on preventing invasive species. So just to give you a quick agenda uh today, uh I'm going to walk you through an introduction to MFN, uh project purpose and overview. Uh, the expected outcomes of our project, uh some timelines and milestones, our deliverables as well as lessons learned and next steps. Okay, so for those of you who don't know, my name's Jessica Zadori and I'm the Biodiversity Coordinator with Mitch Pecotin First Nations Lands Department. Uh, currently I'm focused on blending Western science and traditional ecological knowledge. Uh, for those who aren't aware, traditional ecological knowledge is the knowledge, practice and beliefs of indigenous peoples. About the relationship between living beings and their environment, which is passed from generation to generation. Uh, so just some context on our community here. Uh, Mitch Pecotin, which is I'll now refer to as MFN for short, is an Nishnabe community focused on walking towards the good life. Also known as the life of holistic well-being under the guidance of Creator. Uh, so MFN has four reserve areas, however, this project's focused on just two of them, which are located outside Wawa. And called Gross Cat Forty-nine and Gross Cat Forty-nine A. So just for some visual and spatial context here, this is Lake Superior. And I've placed a star over MFN's main reserve land, uh Gross Cat Forty-nine. Uh, so we're focused on this area here, which is just outside of Wawa and on the shores of Lake Superior. And then before I get more into the project, I just want to shout out our funders at the ISC. Uh, it's with the support of the ISC through the Invasive Species Action Fund that we are able to make this project possible within our community. So to jump more into the project now. Uh, here's our project purpose, and that being to prevent the introduction of terrestrial invasive species into reserve lands. Uh, we planned to do this by eliminating the establishment of invasive species through the implementation of an area-specific and MFN-accepted clean equipment protocol. Uh, so this project focused on find it finalizing an existing draft CEP document and then the implementation of it. Uh, so through this project, we were able to meet several goals for our community, those being to. Purchase necessary washing equipment, specifically a truck bed power washer. Uh, we're able to educate staff and community members on invasive species in reserve lands. Um, we're also able to collect data relating to which invasive species are present through the active monitoring of equipment wash areas. And we're able to execute all of these while executing a blanket prevention measure to address invasive species of concern to MFN. So for those of you who don't know, uh, what is a clean equipment protocol? And this is defined within existing standard operating procedure. Uh, to be a document created to help prevent the spread of invasive plants by contaminated heavy equipment through equipment washing. Uh, so this is important because invasive vegetation can spread on equipment through water, mud or plant material that's contaminated with the seeds of invasive species. Uh, this is also noted as unintentional introduction. Uh, so literature notes that ninety-six to ninety-nine percent of seeds may retain. Re- remain attached to vehicles under dry conditions for nearly two hundred and sixty kilometers of travel. On paved or unpaved roads. So by inspecting and cleaning equipment and following some of these simple guidelines, the risk of spreading invasive plants is greatly reduced. So what inspired MFN's Clean Equipment Protocol? Uh, so that's pretty simple, it was our community members reporting the increased presence of invasive plant species within our traditional territory and traditional use areas. So we have a ton of industry operating within our traditional territory such as mining, is just one example. Uh, and we found that there's a lack of legislative requirements relating to invasive species for these activities. And even further than that, we found that there's a lack of compliance ensuring that these industries. Are meeting their requirements for invasive species management. So in our experience, it's become clear that no Ontario ministry has a strong handle on invasive species management. Or the compliance that ensures the adherence to these existing SOPs. Uh, we also are very focused on prevention over management. Uh, we're lucky to be in an area where many invasive species are relatively new. Uh, but with changing climate, we recognize that we need to be on top of preventing establishment of the species in the first place. To hopefully mitigate costs and future effort of tracking and removing invasive species. So what questions does our CEP address? Uh, it's really simple, it's focused on explaining what vehicles and equipment needs to be cleaned, when inspection of vehicles should be completed. How vehicles should be inspected and how to document and track the completion of clean equipment. So these are just some photos to provide some context on the current species that we're trying to combat. Uh, you can see it's quite a range here, we go all the way from sweet white clover to giant hogweed. I do just want to acknowledge though that species such as common mullen and some other ones here as well can be used medicinally or for traditional purpose. Uh, though because of how densely they're currently populating certain areas on reserve, uh it's become a cause for chief council and our community. So just to give you some images here. Uh, on the left, we have a patch of common mullen, which is along an access road used over the past few years for construction. Uh, so this area is newly uh kind of taken over with common mullen as a result of that construction practice. Uh, on the right, we have an image demonstrating how invasive species can, for lack of a better word. Uh, choke out subsistence and traditional use plants. Uh, so in this image, you can see how the bindweed is climbing up the wild raspberry bush and wrapping around its stems and leaves. So through this project, we ultimately hope to empower Mitch Pecotin First Nation to make decisions regarding invasive species management. Uh, we also hope to weave additional indigenous, traditional ecological knowledge and Western science together. To develop resources for MFN staff to utilize for invasive species management moving forward. Uh, we also hope to expand existing initiatives relating to invasive species to address gaps in prevention and management strategies. And ultimately, we hope to improve research on control of invasive species at a local geographic level. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of our project timelines and milestones. I do just want to focus in on one particular aspect that I believe is important, and that being the documentation of baseline condition. So I wanted to draw attention to the collection of baseline condition because it's such an important uh step in the process as well as the implementation of the project. Uh, because we took so much care in establishing baseline condition, we were able to do a couple of things. Uh, so we were able to understand what is present and plan for site-specific conditions at these different wash areas. It also allowed us to monitor progress over time and to determine success uh of the project and implement continued improvement. Again, it also allowed us to ensure that the wash areas are clear of invasive species and will not recontaminate equipment once it's cleaned. And we were able to differentiate between what invasive species were already present versus what invasive species are being washed off of equipment uh following the season. Uh, so by completing baseline data collection in combination with active monitoring throughout the season. Essentially, we were able to keep areas clear of invasive plants that were beginning to grow at the sites. So this is just a small area image of our piece of our reserve lands. Uh, and this is just to give some spatial context to the location of our wash stations with relation to our community located along White Sands Beach. Uh, so wash areas are placed in areas that can be accessed by equipment easily and we're already in proximity to lay-down areas. Uh, we also focused on selecting sites that were pre-disturbed. So this is a drone image of our first wash area, it's along a road to Mitch Pecotin's uh landfill. Uh, so you can see how this area is previously disturbed, uh it was cleared of vegetation and previously used as a discard location for blasted rock. Uh, so the ground is also quite compacted here. This is our second wash area, which is much closer to the community. Uh, it's also closer to our maintenance team's shop uh and was previously cleared. Uh, and disturbed and used for storage of fill materials. So this is just a close-up image of how our temporary wash areas have been set up. Uh, so you can see they're pretty simple but functional. So you can see they're pretty simple but functional. We did end up excavating a small area out and placing a granular bead to help with drainage and prevent pooling of water when washing the equipment. We also placed some erosion control geotextile surrounding the site to ensure that no sedimentation is occurring in neighboring areas and that the seeds aren't moving offsite. So to get into the results of our monitoring. To be honest, our biggest finding was that we just need more time to determine the true success of the project. But we did have some smaller takeaways. These being that we saw the limited reestablishment of invasive species at wash areas at the end of the season. We will be doing some additional monitoring in spring of twenty twenty-five, following leaf out to confirm this. And then we also documented that similar species to those originally documented in baseline conditions were the ones exhibiting regrowth at the sites. So with the completion of our project, we also had a few key deliverables that were able to be formulated. So we were able to complete a full MFN-specific clean equipment protocol document as well as formulate some clean equipment checklist for several types of equipment to go with the clean equipment protocol. We also came out of the project with several staff training slide decks as well as community engagement materials. So this is just a quick example of our cleaning checklist. This is to be completed by staff washing the equipment. When I say staff, I mean MFN staff or proponent staff for projects in the area. So you can see that it's relatively simple, but when it's paired with pictures of washed equipment, it allows us to ensure the continued quality and completion of washing. So to get into our lessons learned, we had a few here. So to start, that a dedicated team and community can make a difference. And I think this is important to recognize because the system's not always perfect, but making an effort does make a difference. Could be a long time before we see measurable impacts of something like a CEP. Second being that industry is willing and able to adapt. So with clear instruction and and they're willing to kind of participate in the process. We found that including the CEP and tender documents for construction projects is a first key step and tends to add transparency to the expectations of the First Nation. Third being that change is hard and can take time. So just like any behavioral change, it's difficult and can require a lot of repetition. No one enjoys adding extra steps to their day to day and changing the culture on construction sites. It's something that we're going to continue to move forward with. And then, as I mentioned previously, that prevention over management is a key aspect of this. Management can be laborious and expensive, so we're trying to do what we can before we have to kind of take that step. I think I missed a slide here, sorry. So just to get into some quick next steps before my time's up. We looked at things in terms of immediate immediate next steps as well as long-term next steps. So in the short term, we're hoping to continue to expand the implementation of our CEP. Like I mentioned, it's been added to all our tender documents. We're also going to begin drone mapping of invasive species hotspots to monitor density and growth over time. In the long term, we hope to continue to work with our community to determine a permanent location for built infrastructure to continue clean equipment protocols and washing. And then we also hope to build community capacity within species identification and citizen science applications. And that completes my presentation. And again, thank you to ISC through the ISAF funds. Feel free to contact me using the information below if you have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Jessica. We have a couple of minutes for any questions. I see a couple in the Q and A now. Someone asks, are there any efforts being made to prevent invasives from being moved around by residents?
We do hope to ultimately expand the washing site to a recreational use. So that being like ATVs, side-by-sides, and things like that. We're just not quite there yet with our with the implementation of it, but ultimately, we will be putting effort into that terrestrially as well as hopefully aquatically with boats and stuff in the future as well.
Someone asks, are you able to quantify new species, new invasive species being washed off?
Not yet. That is something we're hoping to kind of formulate over a few seasons of washing. So that's why the focus on our baseline was so heavy with this first season. And then hopefully, we can use that baseline to do a direct comparison in the future to see if anything new's come up.
Someone asks, can you share the number of vehicles that require cleaning and how the timing is handled with this?
Pretty much right now, we're going anywhere from two-wheel-drive vehicles all the way to like heavy equipment like graders and things like that. The numbers would depend on the project. Obviously, we do have a road project proposed in the future, so that'll be quite a bit of washing. One thing that does kind of mitigate the time is that once equipment is onsite, it just needs to be washed once, as long as it doesn't leave the site. So hopefully, that kind of mitigates some of the timing issues with continual washing of equipment. Hopefully, that makes sense.
And I see one last question for now. Someone asks, they're wondering if your community faced challenges when enforcing these environmental policies and what that process would have looked like.
Oh, of course, yeah. Like I said, no one wants to add extra steps to their their day, especially, you know, if it's super hot or super cold, just anything extra is kind of a problem. So what we found is that consistency has been really important as well as transparency upfront. So when proponents are coming in to work within the traditional territory or the reserve lands, that we're very upfront about the need to implement this process as well as very kind of on top of the compliance aspect of it. So visiting the sites, looking at the checklist, requesting them for archive. And I found that 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 consistency has been the most helpful with combating that.
All right. That's all the questions that I see in the Q and A for now. Well, I see that we already have your email in the chat for anyone who has any additional questions afterward, but thank you so much for your presentation, Jessica.
Great. Thanks so much, everyone.
All right. Well, thank you to all of the speakers from the grants special session. I just wanted to highlight here at the end that the ISC has a resource library that includes in-depth invasive species materials, including technical bulletins, best management practices and videos. These resources are aimed at helping invasive species managers as well as the public in the fight against invasive species. Please visit our website if you'd like to learn more about that. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you so much, Madeline, and thanks to all our speakers this morning. We're going to give everybody a quick break to go use the washroom, refill your coffee, whatever you need to do. And then we'll meet back at about ten twenty to get started with our next session. And that will be on community engagement and community science efforts. So please join us back at ten twenty. It will be in a new session, so please feel free to leave this one right now. And then you can pop in and join the next session in Zoom at ten twenty. So looking forward to seeing you back there. Thanks again, Madeline, for moderating us and taking us through the session.
No problem. Thanks, Mackenzie.